Thank you and welcome to the February 1st meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
President.
Dallas Psychowski.
Here.
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
Here.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Chester Ogilewitz.
Yep.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here.
Before we actually, you know, we'll do this. Could I have approval of the minutes?
No move. Second.
Do you have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of the previous meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or objections? Any amendments? All done. Motion passes. Before we get into public speak time, I do have some quick announcements I'd like to make. One is there will be, in addition to the agenda on the new business, this section will be a motion to rescind CPA appropriation. I've asked Councilor Hagan to handle that and recommend moving that to finance. That's just something that came up tonight. Please review that. That said, I also have, and I think the mayor's going to speak to this, so I'll let the mayor speak to this, about a capital plan. That said, we'll go into public speak time. If there's anybody present here tonight who would like to address the city council on anything that is not currently on the public hearing, please step forward and identify yourself and we'll be glad to have you. Seeing none, I would like to move on to communications from elected officials, boards and committees, and correspondents.
Thank you, President Cobb. I did receive a letter from the Greater East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, and in their continuing effort to improve communication between city government and the chamber, they have requested the formation of a liaison between the council and the chamber. Council Ogilewitz had, excuse me, had volunteered to be that person as our liaison. So we won't vote on that tonight, but if any councillors can review the letter and see if they have any questions or concerns, and either let myself or President Cobb know, and we'll address this position at the next meeting. That's all.
Counselor Psychowski.
I only have one statement to make. I think this is very healthy for the community, where the business community stepping up like this with a liaison committee, it will, it'll improve our thinking to a certain degree on some issues.
Thank you. Anybody else have a quick comment? Does everybody have a copy of this letter? Just to make sure. Okay, we'll take it up next meeting. Thank you, Counselor McCoy. I have one item that we have received. It's a notice indicating that the zoning board of appeals has a public hearing date scheduled for Tuesday, February 21st, 7:30 PM, on the second floor of 50 Pace and Avenue. This concerns a 40B application for Parsons Village project. So all those interested, please read the material. Please attempt to learn more. That said, that concludes.
Yep.
I would like to move to mayor communication.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mr. President. An item that didn't make it into your agenda, but just an update on the capital plan, or should I say, lack of updated capital plan. As I indicated to you about a year ago, we have not been able to keep up with the goals that were established in the last published plan, which was 2010, and this is simply notification that we're still not able to keep up with those because of the economy and the difficulty in finding available revenue for projects that need to be funded. This letter indicates essentially that we've pretty much consumed all, or will be consuming all of our available general fund resources, either for, in response to the October storm, or to plug the holes in this year's operating budget. There have been some discussions with the Board of Public Works regarding enterprise revenues and use of those revenues, and I think you've received all, as of tonight, you'll have received all of those recommendations.
Thank you. I have a question. This doesn't preclude us doing like a direct replacement or emergency replacements of equipment as a form of capital expense, but it's not part of the plan because...
Well, yeah, all of what we're expending money on is in the plan, with the exception of the item tonight that it would extend sewer and water down Fort Hill Road. That was not in the plan because the situation that is driving that need didn't exist when we wrote that 2010 plan, and so that information within the last six months or so is what's come to light, and the decision to move that forward was supported by the Board of Public Works, recommended by the Board of Health, I think supported by many people in the audience tonight, so. Yeah, and so it's difficult to spend the time to redraft a hundred or so page plan when you really can't report anything different than what's in it now. The projections that we had used assumed that we wouldn't, that we would be pulling out of this recession and that things, life would be somewhat back to normal, and since then, of course, the state's cut aid a couple of times. We've had to deal with issues that were unforeseen, and we have right now some issues in public safety that are going to require the balance of the available general revenues to help plug pretty significant holes in overtime. You'll get that end of the month or in March, but that'll use up the last of our general capital.
Any other questions for Counselor Psychowski?
Michael, I realize that you have the authority to appoint for the search for the plan, for the new planner, but I was reading about who you appointed in the paper, where I have no objections to who you appointed. But just being me and thinking in how I know this community, it seems like to me we'd have a realtor, a banker, and maybe a business, a property owner on that committee. I realize the appointment is yours, and I imagine you're not going to change it.
We're halfway through the interview process, councillor. It's a little late for any of this.
I know, but I just wanted to bring it up, and I understand you're the appointing authority, but I just wanted, maybe the next time we're looking for one, we'll remember that if you're still here, and I'm still here.
Thanks for your input.
Any further questions for the mayor? Any other items on your report?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, that said, we can enter for a little bit into standing, reports of standing committees, rules and double relations, Councilor Riss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rules Committee did meet this evening. First, a little business. We decided to continue our discussions on the possibility of writing language for an ethics rule. We had some discussion this evening, but did not come to a conclusion, and we are scheduling a meeting for 6:00 PM on February 9th in basement room B in this building to continue our discussions on the ethics rule. We did, however, vote to adopt the amended Rule 8 by a three to zero vote, as I submitted. The new language is in there, and I'll read it. As stated in Charter Section 26B, except as otherwise provided by general law or by this charter, the affirmative vote of five members shall be required to adopt any measure presented by seconded motion for a vote of the city council. An abstention shall be recorded as a non-vote. What this is related to is the charter being changed, now suggesting, now stating that a, any vote for anything this council votes on must have five members for affirmative approval. In the past, we could have had a vote where there was only five members, and things like adopting the minutes could have been passed in a three to two vote, or votes could have happened because people abstained. The Charter Committee felt, and you as, and the council, the previous council also voted, and the mayor agreed, that the city council being nine members, we should have five votes to adopt anything, that being the majority of the members on the council. As a result of this, the entire Rule 8, which was written to try and clarify the various ways this council could have voted in the past, is no longer necessary. So if there's any questions, I'll happy to answer them. Otherwise, I will move this.
Any questions for the councillor on this?
Move the motion.
I therefore move that the city council adopt new Rule 8 as amended and stated previously.
Second.
Do you have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the aforementioned motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any objections? None? Motion passes. Counselor Riss?
That concludes. Thank you, sir.
Did you have something else you wanted to do on salaries?
Oh, yes, I did. Excuse me. President of the council asked me to move a finance matter because it is, has been adopted by the charter, and the charter states that the, in the first year of a new term, the city council shall review the salaries of all elected officials. And I therefore move that this city council finance committee be charged with looking into the salaries of all elected officials, and I would also ask that the council consider boards and committees that might also be salaried in that motion. And as, lastly, as part of that motion, that regardless of the 90-day, that I'd like the council to approve allowing the finance committee as much time as it needs rather than just the 90 days. So that's part of the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move to finance the Charter recommendation to review the salaries and stipends of all elected officials and appointed members on the boards and committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any objections? Motion passes. Counselor Riss?
Second.
Is him done, I think?
Yes, that concludes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Finance.
Councilor Hagan. As always, it's a busy night for finance. In a few minutes, when we start the public hearings, there'll be actually four matters of supplemental appropriation and one of ordinance amendment that goes along with one of those supplemental appropriations. We'll take those up at 6:15. Also, I'll be asking for a couple of public hearings on some matters, which I just will wait till new business, so, because I want to do a couple of public hearings on new business also. If that's okay, I'll do them all in one thing. What I would like to say is, our next meeting will be February 8th at 6:00 PM, and one agenda, item on that agenda will also be the city council's budget itself, just for notification. We'll just be taking up that, at that subcommittee meeting. And finally, for the public, before we get into this, and I know the mayor alluded to it a little, I just wanted to give the public a little sense of where we are in the free cash. If everything that's been brought before finance at this point is approved, and some, many of these have been approved, some are still in the committee, we would be down to approximately 113,600 in free cash and 149,286 in retained earnings. So that's what we have, without touching stabilization, that's what we have from now till the next fiscal year. That concludes finance this time. As I said, during new business, I will set some public hearings that are on the agenda.
I can probably do public safety.
Okay, public safety. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, the Public Safety Committee will have a meeting on Thursday, February 9th at 5:30 PM in conference room A. Our topics will be the parking issues on Chapin Street, the request to add the no parking on Ferry Street between 94 and 104, and requests for a new pole location on O'Neill Street. I would like to set a public hearing anticipation of being able to resolve the pole request. This is in a form of a motion for public hearing on the location of the pole on O'Neill Street for 6:15 PM, February 15th, at these locations.
Second.
Okay.
Do you have a motion on the table for, recommend a public hearing for a new business item? All those in favor of setting that public hearing?
Aye.
Aye? Any objections or extensions? Okay, public hearing is set.
Terrific. Okay, and that concludes for now.
Thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to enter the public hearing.
No move. Second.
We have a motion on the table to be in the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? No? No extensions? Okay. Counselor Riss, this is your show again tonight. Counselor Hagan.
He's scared the hell out of himself.
His white hair.
He's got more to do. The first matter that, as I said, there's several matters for public hearing tonight. The first matter is actually an ordinance amendment that will go coincide with one of our supplemental appropriations, and this is a proposal to amend the city ordinance, Chapter 7, Personnel, Section 7-18, Classification and Pay Plan with Exhibit B, which is attached, substituting the salaries and wage scale on file with the city clerk with a new Exhibit B effective January 1st, 2012. This matter is just taken up under, that will give us the ability, if one of this, the first supplemental appropriation we go to is actually approved, we'll have that in place, so that will flow. That said, if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak on changing the pay plan, feel free to come to the podium.
Please come to the podium, identify yourself, and address the council if you'd like to speak to this item. Seeing none, Counselor Hagan?
Seeing none. Unless councillors have any particular things they want to weigh in, and I'll make a motion.
One brief comment. This is generally something we look at and do every January. For pay plan employees, this is effective January 1st, 2012. Most of us here, we know that pay plan employees did not receive an increase last year, and so we're, we have examined that. That's all.
That said, I make a motion. I move that the city council approve the amendment to the city ordinance known as the classification and play plan by substituting Exhibit B salary and wage scale as on file in the date, excuse me, in the office of the city clerk with the attached Exhibit B salary and wage scale dated January 1st, 2012, and to establish an effective date of said substitution of January 1st, 2012.
Second.
I have a motion on the table to amend the ordinance known as the classification and pay plan, substituting Exhibit B as presented tonight, effective January 1st, 2012. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any extensions? Motion passes. Counselor Hagan?
Our next public hearing, again, is related. This public hearing, and I'll do a second reading on this, this is a request dated February 15th, 2011, 11th, for supplemental appropriation, signed by the three, the auditor, the mayor, and the department head, to request $12,570.70 to be appropriated from free cash retained earnings in the amount, excuse me, free cash in the amount of $11,086.58, and from retained earnings in the amount of $1,484.12 to be appropriated to the various departments listed on the attached spreadsheet, in the total amount of $12,570.70. The amounts requested would be used for the following purpose, to fund a 1.5% COLA for the pay plan employees effective January 1st, 2012. My only comment before I ask any members of the public if they want to come forward is basically what Counselor Cobb said about the ordinance change. This is a matter where the non-union employees received 0% last year, and it's just a small amount that we're trying to give them, to give them something this year. I believe the $12,570 is actually for six, six months of that, of that item. Is there any members of the public that would like to come and make comment on this? You can feel free to step to the podium.
Any of the members of the public are willing, please come to the podium and address the council on this issue. Seeing none, before I entertain a motion, are there any questions for the mayor or the councillor concerning this item? Seeing none, Counselor Hagan?
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve the appropriation of $12,570.70 from the following: free cash, $11,086.58, and retained earnings, $1,484.12. The purpose to be appropriated to the various departments is listed on the spreadsheet with its request to fund a 1.5% cost alleviating adjustment for the pay plan employees.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of a supplemental appropriation of $12,570.70. This is from free cash, $11,086.58, and retained earnings, $1,484.12. This motion is to fund a 1.5% COLA for pay plan employees effective January 1st, 2012. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Any objections? Motion passes. Counselor Hagan?
The next public hearing that we'll go to is, and I'll do a second reading on this, again, it's from, dated from December 15th, 2011, with the appropriate auditor, mayor, and department head signatures. It's the amount requested is $25,000, and is to be appropriated from the CPA Open Space Fund in the amount of $25,000 to be appropriated to the CPA Open Space Land Acquisition. The amount requested will use for the following purpose, to assist the Pasquamic Conservation in their efforts to preserve open space along East Street.
Okay, if there's anybody in the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue, we'd like to actually have the CPA chair, please identify yourself, state where you live, please.
Robert Harrison, Representative CPA Committee.
Gotcha.
And may I comment what a fine legislative body we have here tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Hagan and President Cobb. Just a couple of points in support of this appropriation. You're going to hear a lot of good information from Mr. John Bader and maybe others from the Pascomic Conservation Trust. They have some very detailed info, but what we're speaking about has become known as, we've given this title, the Donay Property, 6.3 acres fronted off of East Street, and the CPA appropriation is for $25,000 as part of the package. Now, our committee, one of our, as our charge is, we discussed all the details and met with the trust and looked over maps, just as you have in front of you, and as a group determined that eligibility was, was right there for open space and it's appropriate use of our, of the city CPA tax dollars. On November 17th, 2011, we voted eight to zero, unanimous at that time, in favor of appropriating $25,000 of CPA open space funds, and that was contingent as part of our motion that it be available to the trust upon them completing an entire package to have a, have a full sale available. And we suggest that be part of your, your motion. The, just a point in case it doesn't pop later, that's important. With CPA fund, funding of land, this is a requirement, and this, these funds will also pay for a permanent conservation restriction on that property. I guess the city actually owns that, but it will be permanently restricted for, for just open space use. Now, a little bit of trivia then, I guess, for the trust maybe even, I found some information that they actually provided to us back in 2005. The trust did a study, not sure if it was at our request or not, of a number of pieces of land in town, which they kind of identified as land protection opportunities that may have been vulnerable for, for development, and this particular one was on the list way back almost seven years ago now, as a good candidate for a high-end home on that 6.3 acre. So they've been very patient and have brought other properties to our attention, and they've taken their time, and they brought together a very good package, and on behalf of the CPA Committee, we encourage you to accept our opinion in providing this to you and appropriate the funds. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any other members of the public who would like to come forward and speak to the council on this issue? Welcome forward, John. I know you do. Please state your...
John Bader, I'm president of the Pascomic Conservation Trust in town here. What we're proposing to do is purchase a six-acre parcel, which is bounded by East Street on one side and East Green Street cul-de-sac on the other, and also boundaries our present holding, namely, the Brickyard Brook Conservation Area, and it is an important parcel to us. It has an open field, actually a wildflower meadow now, and it has, it's actually bounded on three sides by forest, and it has two streams running through the property. It is presently owned by Mary Ann and Robert Donay, and Mary Ann inherited this after her father died. Her father was Jim Mutter. He was a well-known car dealer in North Hampton, and they had a residence at the end of the cul-de-sac there, and they still do, and his wife Alice's mother still lives there. We should be looking at the map now, I guess, to give you a better idea. Can we have the lights here?
Joe.
Dim it a little bit anyways. So...
Except for the ones we need.
You had the wrong, wrong lights.
Those are on a nightlight circuit. Probably they won't.
Flip the last switch the opposite direction.
Good, good. All right, get my gamma ray out here. Let's get some orientation here. This is Clark Street coming up from 141, and it eventually hits East Street. This is East Street. That's a cemetery here, St. Stanislaw Cemetery. This would be East Green Street. The cul-de-sac is right here. Pretty hard to see from here to this distance, but anyway, here's the, this section here is the farm, the Mountain View Farm, which the trust actually helped to save, and this is our Brickyard Brook property in this section here, and the Donay parcel is right along here. Now, there's a dogleg going running in this section, and it runs all the way up to the cemetery. So that's what we want to look at, the Donay parcel right here. Now, you see, there's the meadow, and it actually, there's two, two meadows actually, the main meadow, and then there's one by this East Street entrance, and an old farm road going across the culvert there, across the brook to join the main meadow. We are very interested in preserving this meadow because it's a, it adds to the wildlife picture here, and it's a very beautiful spot, and there's actually a grove on the west section here, that, yeah, right here, which would be a good place for picnic tables, and you know, on a hot summer, summer day, in the shade, sitting at a picnic table, looking over a wildflower meadow, and then we got the Mount Tom in the background, that's a, that's quite an experience there. So that's why, you know, we're looking at this. We've been looking at this for a few years now, and we finally got the opportunity, and it took a lot, a lot of finagling to get this far.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to come forward to speak on this issue?
I would, before, before anybody comes up, I'd like to talk about the financing.
Please do.
We have three different options for financing this project. First, let me tell you about the appraisals. We had two appraisals. The Donay appraisal came in at $115,000. Our own trust appraisal came in at $95,000. They weren't too happy about the $95,000, so we decided to kick in an extra 10%, making it 104,500. Ordinarily, when a land trust like ours makes a land deal, we're not supposed to go over the appraised value that we, that the land trust actually had, but in this case, we felt it was necessary and justifiable, so that's what we did. So it's a 10% increase, and so it comes up to 104,500. Funding options, the first funding option would be, of course, the CPA request for $25,000. The second, we did apply for a state partnership grant for $47,500, and the third option would be fundraising campaign, a giant fundraising campaign, which would actually be for two properties, not only the Donay parcel, but a parcel we are buying at the end of Paul Street, along the Mahan River. Unfortunately, the state partnership grant fell through a little bit. We ended up in like a third place or something, but there is a possibility of getting that funding in the second round, or if somebody drops out. If it comes too late, we can back, drop down to our pockets and pull out our last piece of change and barely make it, but we are dedicated, the person is property one way or another, so that's what we're going to have to do, and we'll just hope the fundraiser comes through for us after all. Reasons, we have four main reasons for obtaining this parcel. One is to expand our trail borders. It'd be nice to get a, a nice walk right along the edge of the meadow, maybe go into the cemetery area, say a few prayers for our dead departed souls. The picnic area, beautiful. Second one would be to obtain a much-needed entranceway, actually, two entranceway, one from the... One from the cul-de-sac on East Green Street, and another one from the East Street side. And there's a little field there we could use as a parking lot before you enter the main field. We don't have a good system of entranceways now. We do have, on the wall, Seesman, we have the main one now, but there's limited parking. We have one pretty close to the Mountain View Farm on the East Street end, but it's virtually useless, no parking, and if you wanted to park, you'd probably have to park up the mountain someplace, and then you'd have to walk along the guardrail. There's no sidewalks there to get into the entranceway there, so we want to eliminate that totally.
I'm going to have to ask you to start thinking in brief terms, so we can...
Yeah, okay. So, and actually, the last one here is, last reason, look at the big picture here. We have the farm, we have the, our conservation area right now, which has brooks and woods and ravines, and now we have a wildflower field with a clear view to the mountain. What more could you ask? It's a triple play here, so that's why we want to get it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to step forward and speak on this particular issue? If you could, please keep it brief, please.
My name is Stanley Jocinski. I'm a board member of the Pascomic Trust, and I'd just like to thank the CPA and Finance Committees for getting us this far. I just wanted to say that this week, we did, or last week, we did reach a settlement with the Donays, and they have signed a purchase and sale, so we're very happy about that. So, it looks like it's moving forward. And that we also, during our fundraising, and we didn't know, during our fundraising campaign, we are going to be sure to mention that the Donays family made this possible, but also upon completion of a closing, that the City of East Hampton will have helped provide us hopefully with $25,000 toward this land. And we also agreed to add a sign of some sort to the entrance, saying that this was partially made possible by funding from the City of East Hampton or CPA Committee. So, and so that's it. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stan.
You're brief because you've already had a chance to speak, but go ahead. Please, go ahead. Recognize, step up, recognize yourself.
Your name again, Joe.
I was just here, John Bader, President of the Trust. I just want to include these photos for you to see. Beautiful area, here's the meadow, looking out towards Mount Tom, picnic area in here. Well, this is actually an entrance from our conservation area. And there's a memorial plaque on a boulder and a memorial stone. So, anybody wants to see these up close, fine. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Counselor Hagan or any members of the, the Chair of the CPA, Joe, Counselor McCoy?
What is your timeframe for your fundraising? When do you hope to make the balance you would need to purchase the property?
Well, we were originally heading for the end of June, but did we bring that up?
We believe that it's six months upon the signing of purchase and sale, which was last week, so now we're looking at 30 and 20.
John, one quick, one quick question. This is approximately six point three acres, I believe, right?
Well, I originally thought it was six point three, but it's really six. The point three acres is actually an exclusion that on Alice's side, so she wants that.
So, it's six acres.
Yeah, it's six acres.
Thank you. Counselor Ogalevitz. We're getting better. Did you see where the parking was going to be? John. John, he was asking a question. Who would like to answer that?
Where parking? East Street.
Was it going to be on East Street?
Pardon?
Parking would all be on East Street?
Parking would be on East Street or the cul-de-sac on East Green Street, on the opposite end.
Is there enough room in the cul-de-sac for parking?
There's a, yeah, there's enough space.
If you would like to step forward and answer this question, please just come to the podium and identify yourself. If I'm looking at a dead end, you know, with a street with a cul-de-sac...
Yeah, yeah.
My name is Stanley Jocinski again, and the parking on East Green Street would just be on the street itself. What we hope to do on East Street is just a very small, possible four-car parking area. It's just enough for about four cars to pull off, and so on East Street. Other than that, on the East Green Street entrance, it would just be on the street itself. There's no ability to make any kind of parking.
Have the neighbors been consulted or talked to, see how they feel about?
I can say that as far as our Brickyard, which neighbors does, a lot of the neighbors use that extensively, and this summer, we did a rehabilitation of a lot of the trail systems and bridges, and met a lot of the neighbors who really appreciate it, and as a result, gave us donations. So, I think they would be equally as happy to have a nice little picnic area with a nice, you know, meadow flat view adjacent to it, which would be connected. So, yeah. The majority of the people, we believe, will go to East Street.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselor Hagan?
Just one quick follow-up of Counselor Ogalevitz's question. Would you, how many cars would you expect to be there? I know it's a kind of an open-ended question at any time. I mean, what type of...
I wouldn't expect more than, I wouldn't expect more than one or two, actually.
At any percent?
Yeah, or no more than four, really.
Yeah, it averages around one to four.
We have an entrance, one of our entrances to Brickyard is on Mount Tom Avenue, and there's not many people that park there, so that would be equivalent to East Green Street. So, there's not a lot of activity at that entrance. Most people, yeah, but so it would be equivalent to that, but yeah.
You know, when we're talking about parking, you know...
Anybody else have any questions for these individuals? Okay, that said, I'll allow you a quick comment. Close your comments, please.
Mostly used by neighbors walking, especially on East Green Street.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to, in the public, would like to come forward and speak on this issue? Seeing none, I want to thank you for a thorough presentation, Counselor Hagan. If there's no other comments by counselors, I'll make a motion.
I don't know, can I, do I kind of f the motion? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay.
But only to the council.
Right.
Motion, I move that the City Council approve the appropriation of $25,000 in CPA funds contingent on full funding towards the purchase of a conservation restriction on a parcel of land of approximately six acres located off East Street, Assessor's Map, 149, Lot 54, also known as the Donay Property. Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of appropriation of $25,000 in CPA funds contingent upon full funding for the purchase of a state conservation restriction on a parcel of land off of East Street known as the Donay Property. Are there any further questions from the council?
Counselor McCoy? I just wanted to hear the motion. I know it was referred to in the past that that appropriation is dependent upon the successful fundraising for the rest of the money. It was just, I just wanted to guarantee that was in there.
Counselor Winnie.
Can you give us an update as to how much money we have spent out of the CPA funds on open space, affordable housing? Do you have that?
I don't have it with me, the CPA. I don't know if we could break...
We have a motion.
I know we have a motion unless we want to change the...
That's okay, I'll get that later then.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Any objections?
I will.
Okay. Counselor Hagan, you still have the floor. Motion passes.
Was that an objection or objection?
Objection. Thank you.
Yep. Next public hearing. And like the other two, this was approved three to zero by the Finance Committee Subcommittee, but I will read a second reading on this, dated December 22nd, 2011, signed by the Auditor, Mayor, and Department Head. Hereby requested the following amount, $35,900 to be appropriated from free cash, and the amount of $35,900 to be appropriated to the landfill professional services, and that same amount, $35,900. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to implement an analysis of the expansion to the landfill gas monitoring in place at Oliver Street landfill.
If there's any members of the public who would like to come speak to this, please come and step forward, address the council and identify yourself. Seeing none, we have the Superintendent of Public Works, Joe. Would you like to...
I have a question, certainly.
Okay, before we have a motion on the table, does anybody have any questions on this item?
I just have a statement. It seems like this is mandated by the state, and we have no choice.
Pretty much. So, that said...
If I could just make one comment, in the deliberation by the Subcommittee, it was, it was brought up that it's kind of flowing north from the landfill, I guess what's called the, old, referred to as the Anderson Property, where the brush, brushes, that's the way it's been migrating that way for a while. And it also was brought up by, I believe Counselor Ogalevitz came and wanted to know if the solar project had any impact on the gases expanding, and according to Larry Hanson of the DEP, that he saw no discernible effect by the solar, either of the, at this point of the gases or the groundwater, but he said they would be constantly monitoring. So, I just wanted to throw those comments out.
Okay. Any further questions for the counselor? Hearing none? I want to take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the full council approve the request to appropriate $35,900 from free cash to be appropriated to the landfill professional services, the amount of $35,900, for the following purpose, to implement an analysis on the expansion of the landfill gas monitoring in place at the Oliver Street landfill.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table of a supplemental appropriation request of $35,900, the full amount from free cash to landfill professional services to implement an analysis of an expansion to the landfill gas monitoring in place at the Oliver Street landfill. Are there any further questions?
Just one quick comment, this was a three to zero vote by the Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any further comment or question on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any extensions? Motion passes.
The final, final public hearing tonight is as follows. I'll do a second reading, dated December 22nd, 2011. The request for appropriations, signed by the Auditor, Mayor, and Department Head, requesting $50,000. This would be appropriated from retained earnings, and that amount, $50,000, to be appropriated to the Department of Public Works Water Department, Fort Hill Road Utility Extension. The requested purpose of this would be to extend the water and sewer utilities to service additional businesses and residential customers.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would like to step forward and address the council? Please identify yourself and...
Good evening, counselors. Fire Chief David Mottar. This is more than just running water and sewer. This is a huge public safety nightmare that will be lifted off my plate. Currently, there are no fire hydrants in only two portions of the city, Mineral Street and the area that's proposed to be added on to. Worst-case scenario, we get a winter like we had last year, where the river freezes in, the Manhattan and the Oxbow. We get a nor'easter come in. Alls it takes is one of those cottages to start a fire, we'll never stop it before they're all gone. With the rivers being frozen, we have no way to get water, which requires us to bring in tanker trucks, the closest to being North Hampton and West Hampton, and it would be good for one shot, and then we have to start finding either back up on East Street or on Clapp Street for water. I guarantee you, we'd lose two or three of them before we got enough tankers out there, depending on the road conditions. By bringing the water out there, you alleviate this public safety nightmare, one of two remaining. There's also potential cost savings for the residents that will be getting this water service. The insurance service organization, which classifies municipality fire and water on their firefighting forces and water flow. East Hampton has a dual rating. That portion of town has a nine, which is the worst. Depending on who their insurance carrier is, by running water out there, those people may see a reduction in their homeowner's insurance. May only be $50, $60 a year, but they could see a savings on their homeowner's insurance. So, not only are we increasing public safety, but the potential for everybody who's on that proposed main exists for them saving on their homeowner's insurance. So, I think this, from my department point of view, is huge. Besides the fact that's public health with potential bad drinking water and providing better service to our taxpayers, number one, it's a public safety issue, and it needs to be done sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent? Please state your name and position there.
Joe Pachinsky, Director of Public Works. The fire chief touched on it very briefly when he talked about a increase in water quality, and that's just what we would get. Right now, we have water main that comes down Lovefield Street and then down Clapp Street, and it deadends on Clapp Street. With hooking this main up to East Street, we would go down, make that connection at Clapp Street, and then run the water main down River Street. So, what we would have is a gigantic loop that would increase the water quality tremendously. We have an old cast iron water main down there. Anytime you can loop a water main, not only for fire protection, but just water quality. So, this is a win-win all the way around.
Counselor Hagan.
Joe, could you just explain how far, I know the water goes all the way, but if you could just break it down, how far the sewer, the sewer doesn't go all the way out to the cottage? That's why I just wish you could break that down.
No, the sewer will come off of East Street and go down Fort Hill just before it drops over the edge towards the bridge, because on the left-hand side, there's a proposed brewery that's going in there, so that sewer line would serve that brewery. But the water line would continue to Clapp Street and then branch off Clapp and go down River Street.
Counselor Winnie.
What are cottages and whatever doing now, are they on septic systems down there by the river or...
That's right. The sewer is not meant to serve the cottages, just the water, so they'll continue to be on septic.
Counselor Sakowski?
Just a comment, Joe, you don't have to answer this, but this is one of those projects that should have been done years ago to address this problem. But you know how it is, with no money around and everything else, things get put off, but I'm glad that we're finally moving on this, and it's an important thing, because right now, the water quality down on River Road at that cottage is, it's really difficult for those people. And this way here, it will help, it will help those people tremendously, and they are taxpayers in this community, and they should be served. Thank you.
One comment, if you'd like to answer that, please go for it, with that first.
No, go ahead.
Could you explain, especially to the public, the conditions on tying in, because this is different than the last time, like what we did out in the Plains area?
Yeah, out in the Plains area, when we ran the sewer line through there, that was, the board mandated that people hook in, because it was an aquifer protection problem, that we were running the sewer out there to protect the water in the aquifer. So, the rest of the cottages, they're not going to be required to tie into water right away. I'm sure they probably will as soon as they, you know, as soon as they can. And as far as the sewer is concerned, it'll only go to the top of the hill. There's some homes on that opposite side of the road. They won't be required to tie in, but eventually, they're going to have problems with their septic system, and they're going to want to tie in, so it's going to be available. The other thing I want to make known to the council is that the work is going to be done in-house by water and sewer forces. This is not something we're contracting out. If we're contracting out, the cost would be much higher than $50,000. The cost of the pipe alone is $50,000, but the labor will be provided by the, by Public Works. We figure that April 1st, we'd probably start in, might take us about a month to do.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions for the, okay, any comment for the Counselor Hagan? Any questions? Okay, Counselor Hagan, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that...
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, somebody else?
Are there other members of the public who would like to... Are there other members of the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue? Please do. I apologize. State your name and address, please.
I'm Bill Barkum. I am from Southampton, but I'm on the executive board for the Rodden Gun. And I will be brief because this isn't my favorite thing to do, okay? The Rodden Gun, they're under a mandate from DEP to put water in. Money has been appropriated by the club to help out with this project. We, we can't put it into this, this pipeline to help depre, defray the cost of this project. This is a public health issue, not only for the club, but for the, the, the people in these cottages. We were flooded out how many times last summer? Three, three or four times? And it's, excuse me, you have to sanitize the well each time that you do it, that you get flooded out. And it doesn't necessarily mean that you get all the bacteria out of the water system or the contaminants. The river was really bad this summer. The DEP closed the river for, for all activities, fishing, et cetera, et cetera, until all these contaminants got flushed out. And it seems like it, it's happening more and more. There's more activity, there's more activity on the river, there's more activity on the, on the shores and on the, the tributaries that drain into the river. So, hopefully, we can, we can get decent water, not only for the club, but for the, the people in these cottages. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who would like to come forward and speak on this issue? Please do. State your name and address for the record.
John Dronowski, fourteen Old Stagecoach Road. I guess we're not quite sure. Everything that we hear is about River Street and Fort Hill Road. I want to make sure it's going down Old Stagecoach Road, too.
The answer is no.
The answer is no. They're talking about the cottages down there. That's not part of the cottages down there?
You don't have an answer?
We went to...
Superintendent Pocinski, could you step to the podium and please answer this question?
When we were at the Health Department meeting...
That, that wasn't initially talked about, but if water were to be wanted down there, that would be very, a very simple thing to do. It would be something that could be done very, very quickly. The initial, the initial request came from the Rodden Gun, to get water down to the Rodden Gun. We realize there's other people down there. If other people would like the water, it's not a big deal for us to run it a little bit further.
You would do that at your own expense, not? I don't know how you would pay for that.
Well, there's, well, there's tie-in fees that, that would be, that, that would, that would be paid. That could offset the cost of anything, any, any future expansion.
So, the answer is possible?
Very possibly, very possibly. If, if we got, if, if we got requests from the homeowners to run it down there, of course we would. Why wouldn't we? We're picking up more customers.
You want to speak to this, Mike?
I think, I think you got, I'm sorry, I think you got the answer. The department routinely will extend, do relatively low-cost extensions of the water service to service customers that are requesting it. It sounds like the department didn't get a request from the homeowners along that street, so they didn't plant it into the project. It would be a relatively small water line. There are three, four homes?
One, two, three, five?
Five. So, it might, it might be a little bit larger line, but I don't, I don't think that's an issue at this point. And I don't believe anybody's waived any tie-in fees on this project. So, every water user's going to pay the, the conventional tie-in fee that's required by the regulations. Now, that money is not expendable by the department, as you know. It comes as a part of the retained earnings income, and then they get certified as available at the end of the year as, as retained earnings. So, so that money would be available to appropriate in the future, but it won't be available to add to this project.
Thank you. Please step forward.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
We were at the Health Department meeting where they said that they mandated that the town put water into all the cottages down there. So, I just want to make sure that Old Stagecoach Road gets their water, too.
Okay, want to speak to this, Mike?
No, except that the Board of Health has no authority in the matter. They did make a statement. They overstepped their authority, their legal authority. They can't order any of this. But I'm certain the department, as they said tonight, are willing to work with the homeowners as long as they, they are available to come up with the tie-in fees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members who would like to go? Please go for it. State your name and address, please.
I'm George Dorman, twelve Old Stagecoach Road. And I was at that Board of Health meeting and I'm very disappointed to hear that they have no authority to do that. They came down, they told us we couldn't drink the water, to stay out of the water, stay out from down there. And now we hear all this hearing and we're not even included in this. I'm very disappointed that we weren't contacted, believe me. So, I don't know, what does that mean? We're going to be excluded on this go-round on the water line?
Where's that superintendent? Go ahead, Joe.
As I explained to the council just a few seconds ago, if we got a request for people on Old Stagecoach Road that they wanted water, we would certainly entertain that. And as I said previously, it's a very simple matter of running it down there. They pay the tie-in fees, the tie-in fees would pay for the cost of running, the, running the water line. It's not a big deal. All we would need is a, a letter from, from them, signed by the homeowners to the Board of Public Works, saying, "Hey, while you're down there, can you do this for us?" "No problem."
Well, that's very easy to do. Again, George Dorman, but I would think that the city's Board of Health, when they made a statement, somebody would have realized that we wanted water down there.
I cannot speak for the Board of Health. But you just heard from the people who are doing the project that if you submit a letter to the method that he recommended, that they'll work their hardest to oblige you.
Okay.
I totally agree with you. I thought for sure, the original intent I heard, that the thing was going to shoot all the way down to all the property owners. And sitting here tonight, I was still under that impression. I don't know why. Because I got it in my mind that we're going to do the whole thing at once. And it's one of those things that happen in this town that can drive me up a wall at times. But the thing of it is, I just hope that you people get together and present a petition to the Board of Public Works. And the day you present that petition, call me, I'll be here to represent you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members who would like to come forward and speak to the council on this issue? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Hagan, before we have a motion, is there any further questions on anybody here for comment?
I'd make a motion, I move that the City Council approve the request of fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated from retained earnings, fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated to the Department of Public Works Water Department, Fort Hill Road Utility Extension. The amount requested would be for the following purpose, to extend water and sewer utilities to service additional businesses and business and residential customers.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of a supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand dollars. This is the full amount to be appropriated from retained earnings for, to extend the water and sewer utilities to additional businesses and residential customers off the Fort Hill Road Utility Extension. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Objections? Okay, the motion passes. You have a commitment from Counselor Sakowski to help you out. You know the method you have to choose in order for the Board of Health to get you tied in. And I hope that... Excuse me, Board of Public Works, to get yourself tied in. Thanks for the correction. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Do we have a motion on the table to close the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Objections or abstentions? Public hearing is closed. Back to committee reports, appointments. Counselor Winnie?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met tonight in these council chambers at quarter of six. We have one mayoral appointment presented to us. The name of the appointee is Fran Hamel for the zoning Board of Appeals. The appointment subcommittee unanimously recommended that we go forward with the appointment. So, I would like to make this in the form of a motion that we appoint Fran Hamel to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term of expiration of December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend a mayoral appointment of Fran Hamel to the Zoning Board of Appeals, expiration date of twelve thirty-one fourteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Winnie?
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all for our report for tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Derby, ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. President. My report for tonight is to state that we have a meeting a week from today, Wednesday, the eighth of February at six P.M. And it's going to be in one of the basement rooms. Not sure which one yet. But it seems like Barbara's looking for us. I imagine it's either A or B, so. And B.
B.
So, six P.M., basement room B. And that's going to conclude my report.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sakowski, property?
Yes, we met this evening and we voted three to zero to authorize the request for the bridge project. And Counselor Oglevitz will have the motion. I'm sure everybody's familiar with this. It's all town property and it's for the North Avenue Street Bridge. And the town, the town lawyer has looked at it, and he says the paperwork's perfect, so we're, we went right along with it. And the motion is written by the town attorney, so there should be no problem with the motion. Chancellor will give the...
Thank you. I'd like to remind the council, as a property, a public hearing is not required. So, this is due and appropriate. Counselor Oglevitz?
I move that the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the right-of-entry and land damage agreement relative to the North Hampton Street Route Ten Bridge project over the Manhan River and take any other action as necessary to perpetuate said agreement.
Second.
We have a, a motion on the table to recommend approval of the, to authorize, to authorize the executed agreement relative to Route Ten project as stated. Are there any further questions on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, any objections? Okay, motion passes. Counselor Sakowski? You still have the floor. End of our report, sir. Thank you. Okay, heading on to new business, the first item before us is a declaration of snow emergency. I would ask the finance chair, Counselor Hagan, to read that, please.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one D, that East Hampton City Council, in conjunction with the approval of the mayor, hereby authorizes the emergency expenditure of funds for the continued removal of ice and snow in the city of East Hampton during fiscal year two thousand and twelve, and further that a majority of the finance subcommittee be authorized to approve snow emergency warrants as necessary.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval and declaration of a snow emergency. Any further questions or comment? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None. We've declared a snow emergency. The next item, I would go to Counselor McCoy, request for the poll location, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a, a motion to move the request for poll location, public hearing from Neal Street to Public Safety.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for a poll location, public hearing on Neal Street to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any objections or abstentions? None. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay? So moved.
Okay.
Ordinance amendment request.
Counselor Derby? Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that the ordinance amendment request, Chapter two, Section two point six, should be moved to the ordinance subcommittee.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the, excuse me, recommend that the ordinance amendment request, Chapter two, Section two six, be moved to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or objections? Hearing none, motion approved. The next four, so to say, will be, Counselor Hagan, you have the floor on these.
I'll read off all the motions and then make one motion to send to the finance, if that's okay with the council. Starting with the first one, it'd be a first reading, dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve. Mount requested ten thousand dollars to be appropriated from free cash, and the amount of ten thousand dollars to be appropriated to the tree ward and professional services to allow for continued tree care and removal services in fiscal two thousand and twelve, signed by all the appropriate city officials. My second supplemental appropriation is dated January twenty-fourth, also signed by all the departments. Mount requested fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated from free cash, and the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated to the Department of Public Works Highway Department Capital Repair Expense. To, the purpose for the appropriation would be to repair and update a Model two fifty banded Industries twelve-inch chipper in the Highway Department. The third supplemental appropriation, dated January twenty-fourth, a request to be made for approval in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be appropriated from retained earnings, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be appropriated to the DPW Water Meter Replacement Program, to continue and update the water meters in the city. The final one that I'd like to see moved to the Finance Committee is a... Maybe we'll do this one separately. Let me ask for those three to be moved to Finance.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to recommend that the aforementioned supplemental appropriations be moved to Finance for review and consideration. Any further comments on those? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, objections? Motion approved.
And the last one I'd like to see moved is a motion to rescind the CPA appropriation requested by Counselor Cobb. He recommends that a motion be made by the City Council to rescind two hundred thousand dollars in CPA funds for the Affordable Housing Prop- Project at sixty-nine Parsons Street for reconsider, to be reconsidered and rescinded.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend that the following motion to rescind the CPA proportion be moved to Finance for review and consideration. Any further comments? Counselor Riss?
I must object to this being sent to committee. It is inappropriate at this time primarily for the following reasons. The CPA committee initiated this project and one of the tenants of the Community Preservation Act is affordable housing. This project is still an affordable housing project. It has not been changed. In fact, I believe that we are opening ourselves up to a legal problem, more money by the taxpayers to defend, and action I believe this council should not take until the CPA tells us they want to rescind their request. They have been charged with deciding whether these projects are appropriate or not. I object to this being sent to the council before it even has been heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals, because then if the project has changed and it's no longer an affordable project, for instance, then it could be certainly rescinded by the council, because it would be inappropriate. I believe the action may be legal from a rules point of view, but I think it, I strongly feel that we are opening ourselves up to some action before we, for doing it. So, I cannot vote in favor of sending this to the committee.
Counselor Sakowski?
Well, I never thought of what Danny said before, but that was talking. I think it's still proper to send this to committee. We don't know when it's going to come out of committee. It's not going to, we don't know if it's going to come out next week or a month from now. We, the committee has ninety days to work on this. So, there's plenty, there's plenty there. And the thing of it is, it seems like they're going for a forty B project, and it's not a forty R project like they said. And I think it has to be reviewed by the Finance Committee to see if we want to rescind that money, because that isn't a project that was put forward when, when the two hundred thousand dollars was given to them, or whatever the money was.
Thank you.
At the end of it.
Any other comment on this? Always is the right to have the final comment. Counsel McCoy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not against any additional discussion and learning as much as we can as far as the legalities of it. You know, I, depending on the definitions of affordable housing, if it fits it, I would probably vote against it or for it, but I'm not against the discussion and looking into the legalities of this appropriation. So I would vote to move it forward. I can't promise which way I'll vote on it, but I, I will move forward for a discussion on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? That said, the reason I brought this forward is because right now, we have an application in front of us that because, in my opinion, in my opinion only at this point, because the application and the vote of the planning board represents a 40B application, and I see that as an unfriendly 40B application for this parcel. And it's, that is what's driving the current measure before us, to have finance review to see if the original appropriation that we made on October 6th, 2010, for affordable housing is, still stands. That said, if there's no further comment? Council Winnie?
I have a question.
Sure.
The $200,000 that we voted on in the other council was for the project that was proposed to us at that time. So I guess my question is, the new project that's being proposed is under 40B, so it doesn't come under the auspices of the original project that was proposed to us.
Sure. That is, that's my opinion.
That was under 40R.
No, it's a 40B project. It, the original project was based on a special permit, not...
It was special permit.
That's my understanding, but the idea of going to review is actually to ask those questions and bring this information forward to the council.
I, I mean, I have no problem with it going down to the finance to just have it reviewed and whatever. I mean, it obviously will have to come back up in front of the full council for a vote. So to have the finance committee, if they're willing to do it, to research it, I have no problem with that, because the money's not literally, it's not going anywhere, it's just going back down into committee to be researched, as far as I'm concerned.
That's correct. None of the funds have been expended, because they haven't secured a permit yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment? Hearing none?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, on what I have in front of me says a motion to rescind the CPA appropriation. I just want to make it clear that what we're voting on is not a motion to rescind the CPA appropriation.
Correct.
A study of rescinding the CPA appropriation.
We're voting to send this to committee, that's all.
Exactly. I just want to be really clear, because it says motion to rescind.
Yes, we're not voting to rescind it tonight, we're voting to send it to committee.
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay, thanks for the clarity. Any further comment? Okay, we have a motion on the table to send this measure to committee. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Aye. Any objections? Okay, motion passes. This is moved to committee. That said... Excuse me. Council Riss?
Mr. President, I request that the clerk inform the CPA committee and the Housing Partnership Committee that this action is being taken. Whenever it's on the agenda for the finance committee, that they be informed, so they might attend.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Hey, motion? Council Hagan?
I have a few public, as I said, when I was doing finance, I have a couple of public hearings I'd like to set, actually four of them. The first public hearing I'd like to set for the meeting of February 15th would be the request of $46,750 from retained earnings to vehicle acquisition for a wastewater treatment vehicle. The second public hearing would be for $55,000 to be appropriated from retained earnings to sewer department vehicle acquisition for a new vehicle in the sewer department. The third public hearing would be for the $10,000 for continued tree care and removal in FY 2012. And finally, for the supplemental appropriation of $14,500 to repair and update the 12-inch chipper in the highway department.
Second. We have a motion on the table to recommend the set of public hearing at 2:15 in these chambers for the aforementioned finance items. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Aye. All those, any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, those public hearings are set. Okay, any other further comment before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.